The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up we have our minutes for May fifth, that was a regular commission meeting and then May sixth, that was a special commission meeting. Did you guys have a chance to look those over? If they look good, we'll need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as posted.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the commission meeting minutes, um, as written.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, commissioners report, Kyle?
Um, the, as far as the street crews, they're still doing, uh, crack sealing on preparation for the chip seal project coming up beginning of June. Um, rock has also been getting delivered to and stockpiled to the city shop area in preparation for that. Um, see what this weather does with the cooler temps, we might push it back a little bit, kind of depends upon a few things, but if it's cool like this, we're definitely not gonna chip seal. Um. Far as there was a hit run accident out here over by Madhouse, uh, bar. There was a, uh, light that was knocked over by someone. Um, that's still kind of ongoing investigation. Uh, Triangle Electric, they will be coming out to install the new light. We do have a new light, uh, full fixture uh, for them to install that, so that'll be completed. Um, like I said, investigation's still going on, going with that with the PD. Um, as far as the PD side, the K nine car is in for some recall work. Uh, same as well as getting that AC fixed. Um, other than that, so yeah. Well, what I got going on this week, um, we're, uh, doing interviews for the deputy auditor position that we're trying to fill. So last week we did an interview and, um, this week we'll have three more, so when I get done with that, we will, uh, we'll select a candidate and, and get rolling on that. So that's, that's all I got for this week.
As far as the water side, we're still pushing forward on the lagoon. We've had Cat out there now doing some programming, working on the generators. Um, they've been out there a few times actually, but we are getting prepped for more projects and there'll be more to come.
How are you coming along as far as removing the sludge in the lagoon before they show up?
I'm still working with both the employees right now on that. I'm having a few issues, but we'll get it done.
All right, for me, um, obviously you guys know that ball field is front and center on my mind, what kind of a, a close second placed amongst other things, but I've been working with a bunch of key players that are gonna be using that field, um, that wanna see that field done as quickly as possible and probably inadvertently opened a can of worms, cuz we started pitching different options to maybe relocate the field, which is, is a long distance like second from what we want. We want that field right across the street from the existing one, right? Like no matter what, um, if FEMA doesn't approve the clomer.
Yes. It, it's nice, nice that, you know, guys, mobile, you can get around it. I'm pretty good at the pickup and stuff, you know, so.
Can you please mute your mic?
See how the weather treats us tonight, huh? See how the weather treats us tonight?
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll see how the weather treats us tonight. Um, so anyway, the, the first option, which is our ideal option, the one we're gonna pursue aggressively is putting the field across the street from the existing field, right? If FEMA doesn't approve our clomer, we will have to look at different areas, and I had mentioned that to a few people. That, that got misinterpreted as FEMA is not gonna approve our clomer. I don't know that. I know Josh is gonna talk about it during his little stretch, but if, if you hear that rumor, it likely started with me. I'm not saying that FEMA's rejecting that clomer at all until Josh tells us so, but right now, the plan is to put that field exactly where we want it to go, right? So Josh will give us an update on that, um. We still have an open police commissioner seat. Um, the fifteen day mandatory wait period before we appoint came and gone, that was what, April twenty-third? We haven't garnered a whole lot of interest as far as people throwing their name in the hat. Um, as far as I know, there's just one right now, um. And it was brought to my attention that a lot of people may not know that we're looking for a police commissioner seat. They might not know that we don't have a police commissioner right now, so the, the prudent thing to do would be to advertise it at least for a couple of weeks, just to give everybody a fair shot. Say, say we didn't know, well, now you've had an extra two weeks, you do know. So I think we fully intend on appointing somebody next meeting, is that correct, guys?
Hopefully.
And so spread the word, if you know anybody, that would be a really good fit. Have them swing in, put in a letter of interest, let us properly vet these people, these candidates, so we got a really, really solid person to fill that, that spot. Um. Gosh, I could really take up our whole meeting if I keep going here. Um, the only thing I will say is, we've been looking at the financials very, very closely. Um, guys, we spend a lot of money to operate the city the way we currently are. Um, I, I think it goes without saying, without that oil and gas revenue, we are in pinch and it happens quick. So I guess I ask you and challenge you guys to look at each of your respective departments and, and find ways to make it more efficient. I'm not saying cut every cost you can possibly think of, but for a town of twenty-two hundred people and the amount of money it costs to run it, the way we're currently doing it, I think there's loads of improvement that we could be making, so be prudent with the money spent, um, and find ways to optimize what we're doing. I mean, I think there's tons of potential, we just haven't really explored all of it, so I will help you guys each with, with that task, but like dial in in each one of your branches and, and find ways to improve. Okay? Um, modifications or approval of the agenda? So there was one request to add a, a letter regarding city water and park district. Um, I would like to add that, if you guys are okay with it.
Is that all you wanted?
It's, that's a, it's just a, a letter essentially asking our help with paying for park districts' water usage.
Okay, well, if you wanna add that, I will make a motion to approve the agenda with that modification.
Does anybody have any other additions? Okay, so we'll move water usage slash park district to number twelve on new business. Okay, we have a motion with the approval of the modified agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the modified agenda. Any questions on that? We'll move to a vote.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Um, old business number one, so Liz is pretty under the weather right now, and I know she didn't have any hot, hot button items to talk about today, so I said, you know, we'll just kind of skim along it. I know she's online right now, so if we do need her help, she'll interject, but for right now, we'll just kind of skip over this and let her, let her rest and heal. So number two, engineering report, more engineering. Uh, hang on, Josh, we can't hear.
Can you hear me now?
Gotcha.
Okay, sounds great. Good evening, uh, thank you all. Um, few items to, to run over tonight. Um, we'll start with the Third Street Northwest and North Hanson Street Reconstruction Project. Um, that, uh, the correction period walkthrough for that, uh, project is scheduled for June twenty-fourth at ten AM. Um, sent a calendar invite for that, uh, to a few of you, um, so I guess as we approach that date, uh, if there's any questions or anything, just let me know, otherwise we'll, um, see you then and, uh, do that walkthrough. Um, that project, uh, was constructed by Crow River Construction, same contractor that did the, uh, North Main Street uh, reconstruction project, so we'll, uh, I guess kinda what, what we're anticipating is doing kind of a preliminary walkthrough on the North Main Street project afterwards, uh, after the, um, Third Street and North Hanson Project, just to, um, kind of create a little bit of efficiency there, um, in case there's anything, but we'll do, uh, the final, uh, walkthrough of, of that, uh, the North Main Street project, uh, um, later, later in the year, closer to, uh, the expiration of the correction period on that project, so, um. Any questions related to that? Okay, I will move on then to the softball, uh, field relocation project. Um, update on the, uh, clomer status, uh, kinda in regards to, um, Brett's, uh, uh, comments on, on the clomer. Um, you are correct, Brett, that there's no, there's no indication that they aren't gonna, gonna approve it, um, uh, at this point. Um, it, it seems like the, you know, there's no, no concern of, of not approving it, just timing, of course. Um, so, uh, so related to that, we did meet with, with FEMA, uh, with their, their contractor, um, that's performing the, the review last week. Um, update on kind of things on their end, they, they were required by, uh, federal government and FEMA to, to pause work for a brief period. Um, however, they are, are back at it, um, of course, so so that's, that's positive. Um, so kinda estimated timeframe for, um, what, what we, uh, anticipate, um, kinda from, from those conversations, and it's, this is, um, I'd say kinda somewhat best case scenario, um, and pending no, no further, uh, instruction from the federal government or FEMA to, to pause work on their end. Um, but, uh, we, we kinda ran through the, the, uh, kinda outstanding items, uh, that, that, uh, we had with them um, and plan to get that resubmitted here in the next, next few days, um, with the updates based upon our, um, discussions from kinda what our initial discussions resulted in, uh, there were a few, a few challenges and, and items we wanted to be sure we were, um, in agreement on, on how we would, uh, would address them, uh, you know, there, I've mentioned to a couple commissioners, you know, they're, this, this area is pretty, um, kinda unique and challenging from the standpoint of, I guess I would probably say sins of the past, um, uh, you know, Phil being placed in areas where it wasn't, uh, uh, necessarily permitted, um, things like that, that are causing kinda some unique challenges um, and items that we just wanna be sure that we're, we're covering appropriately as we, um, resubmit it, so, um. So upon our resubmital, uh, um, pending no further comment from them, uh, the, uh, the gentleman we spoke with that's doing the review, um, said, you know, likely right around a few weeks of resubmital, um, they would, they would acknowledge, uh, receipt, um, of the submittal and provide the okay, um, for public notice, which essentially in this case, um, since it's, it's not, not a huge, uh, huge area that we're mapping, there, it's kinda isolated to, to a few properties, um, or handful of properties, I should say. Um, in that case, letters would be provided to those, um, property owners notifying of, of the areas to be remapped. Um, technically, uh, you know, at, after this resubmital, they, they do have ninety days to respond um, from, from their, you know, high level, um, allowable timing, but but in speaking with him, he said, you know, he's not gonna sit on this and, and drag it out, you know, I kinda let him know of the urgency from the community's standpoint, um, so you know, that, that few weeks or so is, is kinda what we're anticipating there. Um, then, uh, we'll get letters, work with the city to, um, get letters sent out, we'll, we'll get those drafted really right, right away once we resubmit, so that they're ready to go, um, upon the okay from, from FEMA to, to send those out. Um, and then really we just have to provide proof of those notifications to, to the reviewer, um, and then from there it would be, um, right around a few weeks again that he anticipated for, um, for, uh, issuance of the, of the letter, um, the, the clomer itself. Um, so kinda looking at those timeframes, absolute best case scenario is probably right around the middle of July that I would anticipate, um, could be, hope, hopefully we can, uh, you know, kinda hit that timeframe, um, but, uh, that's kinda, kinda what we're looking at, um, from that standpoint, so. Any questions on that topic?
Yeah, Josh, middle of July isn't gonna work. Um, a couple things, estimated, anticipative, kind of, sort of, couple weeks, ninety days, none of that works for us, like none of it. And I know you're in a tough spot, but you need to like push hard on this. Like this, this really needs to be the only thing on your plate for us right now. Cuz we, we can't do middle of July, we're gonna, we're gonna lose next season too then.
Yeah.
I, I know, we, we talked about this when the frost line was six foot down, and we're no further along now than we were then, so I, I don't know what we gotta do to put our foot on the gas pedal here, but just do it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and that, I mean, I it, it's the federal government, I mean, that's, that's the biggest thing, and it's a, it's a timely um, time-taking process and push on as hard as we can, um. So.
So why did we have to resubmit, I guess? Can you please explain that?
Yep, so, so in their review, um, so we submit, submit the documentation, modeling, mapping, all the, the details that they require in the, in their review, they have, um, uh, so they, they essentially took up eighty-five days of their allotted ninety days or so roughly, give or take a few days there, um, uh, to, to s- submit their review, um, comments, and, um, they had their, their comments for items that, that they wanted, um, required to be addressed, um, in order to issue the, the clomer.
What, what were them items that needed to be addressed?
Um, gen- generally it was, uh, it, it's pretty technical type, type things, um, just, uh, related to, um, tie-ins, um, where we're tying in with the existing mapping, um, they required a, a little expansion of the mapping. Um, one, one item was, uh, related to a, there, there's kinda at the north end, just south of Signal Road, the existing mapping shows, um, a split in the stream, so there's technically per the mapping, and it doesn't exist in, in reality out there, but the existing mapping shows a split, um, in, in the stream, so we, you know, how, how do you model that, um, when it's not non-existent, but the effective mapping shows it, which is kind of back to where I go, you know, mention kinda sins of the past, or, or things that may have occurred out there that were, were not, uh, appropriately documented. Um, so some de- details related to that, on how, what the, what they see as the most, uh, appropriate way to, um, say that's going away when it, when it doesn't exist as is, but it's on the existing mapping. Um, just de- details along those lines.
Well, I mean, it does exist as is, that's that racing lawnmower track that was put in, I mean, you can see it, and I'm sure that's what they're looking at, if they're saying it splits and goes to the west and then south, but why can't we just ask them how much dirt needs to be brought in? How high do we gotta raise grade before they'll be okay with it?
It's not raising elevation. We, we, we aren't, there, there's, on the, the, um, excuse me, the um, grading plan, there's actually excess material being hauled off. What the problem is and what the clomer will, will identify is the change in the footprint of the floodway and floodplain based upon the grading that will occur out there for construction of the field.
So as far as we're thinking roughly July-ish, give or take. I mean, if the clomer gets approved, and are we ready to start digging the very next day, or I mean, what, or we have to wait another two months to get mobilized with the equipment and all that jazz?
Let me, let me help with that. Originally, the clomer was gonna get approved April ninth. We asked them to be ready to break ground April tenth. It's May nineteenth, now we're looking mid-July. Don't hold your breath.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I mean, as far as we hit the ground running, I mean, as soon as that's approved, cuz we have to make up ground that we've lost as far as time
Mm-hmm.
we have to work. So what, what, what's that look like as far as mobilization, equipment and all that jazz?
Yeah, and I haven't had any conversations with the, uh, contractor that had been talked to roughly, you know, last, last year, um, on, on what kinda schedule he'd be looking at, and it's kinda, I'm sure it'd be hard for him to say, yeah, I, I can come out there whenever, um, you know, it's just depending on what his, um, workload may be, um, and how, how booked up he is, um.
Also, when this was allegedly planned to be relocated, allegedly, um, we got a quote, we have no contract, that quote was almost four hundred thousand dollars, which throws us well above that two hundred thousand dollar threshold for the competitive bidding process, so we've gotta get more quotes, and I'm working on that right now. I, I know there's a big pitch to go artificial turf as well, and it turns out that that might not be nearly as expensive as people were throwing out there. So that is also an option, but we are gonna have to go out for more bids. We, we can't just take the old one, cuz A, it was just a quote, there was no contract, and it was well above two hundred grand. It was close to four hundred thousand. I think, you know where I'm getting at when I say this was allegedly planned out. Yeah, Josh, I think we're good.
Yeah.
That's it for you, right?
Uh, one last item, the, uh, emergency action plan for the Tyoga Dam, uh, that was uh, attached to the report, uh, fairly lengthy document. Um, we have that ready, we're, um, obtaining, uh, concurrent signatures from, uh, there's half a dozen or so responsible parties, um, one of, uh, one which would be, uh, the commission president Brett there, as well as, uh, city auditor, um, uh, Wendy. Um, so what, I guess, um, is, as you're able, uh, please review that, and I guess if there's any comments you may have, just let me know, um, and we'll plan to, uh, have formal approval and, um, of, of that by the commission at the, uh, next meeting, so. That is all I have.
All right, thanks, Josh. Uh, any questions for Josh? Okay, we're moving on. Um, number three, old business community center expansion update, FCI, hello?
How are you, how are you guys tonight?
Good. A little soggy, but
Yeah, a little wet out there, but irritated, sorry. Also, we are eighty-two percent complete. Uh, the Maple basketball court has been nailed down. All the sports equipment has been installed. Before polishing, the concrete is complete and the casework install is complete. Uh, due next reporting period, our site work will be complete. Our overhead mechanical, electrical and plumbing trimout will be complete. Uh, the finishing and staining of the gym wood floor will be complete, and the carpet and rubber base will be complete. And with this weather that came in, I did push off Knife River, who was scheduled to be mobilizing the twenty-seventh, um, pushed them to the second. Uh, so we hopefully have one week to dry out and, uh, do our final grade, um, any crap, before Knife River comes in the pave. I guess next week we're gonna start for the partitions, uh, there's approximately thirty compartments in there, so that's gonna be a big job, but so we're just in our finishing stages of, uh, getting wrapped up, so. Questions?
After it's all done, are we, have you guys tested, uh, generator yet, or is that
No, so I, we'll do a load test on the generator, um, that'll be sometime in July, once all the electrical's done. Uh, the generator manufacturer will come out, um, do a little test on that generator, just ensure that it operates under load properly.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hi. I have pay request, uh, number ten here for the amount of one million twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and one penny. Not two, one penny.
I make a motion to approve the payout request, uh, in the amount of one million one-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and one cent.
I'll second.
All right, we got a motion in a second to approve payout number ten. Any questions on that? Okay, move to a vote?
Yes, yes, yes.
Hey, motion carries.
Thank you.
You don't have, you have something else, right? No?
No, not me.
I thought we seen something about EAPC.
Not that I know of.
Wow. We might be getting a deal then. We'll let you think about it the rest of the meeting.
Yeah, I know Haley and stuff, but I don't, so. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Haley.
Hello. I have two items that I'm seeking approval for tonight. Um, the first one is the Beta Two pitching machine to go along with our batting cage that we're getting. It was not initially included in the project because we are actually getting a cheaper rate by having it separate. So the cost for this is two thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and we actually received a donation for this item, so I'm requesting that it come out of the donation fund.
How much for the donation?
Um, in total donations we've received for this project so far is fifty-five hundred, and we haven't spent any of it yet.
Well, I will move to, um, approve the pitching machine, I guess, out of that donation fund.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the purchase for a pitching machine. Question? Move to a vote?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. Um, and the second item, I know it's not super exciting for those of you that don't work there, um, but we are looking at getting a second floor scrubber with the added square footage that we're getting with the building. It's a lot more upkeep and maintenance, and we wanna keep the building as safe and professional. It's a lot more upkeep and maintenance and we want to keep the building as safe and professional and clean as we possibly can. Um, I did a lot of research and looked at many different floor scrubbers, talked to different reps. And ultimately came to the one that I'm presenting tonight, which is basically a twin of the one that we have now. It's a great size, fits through our doorways, runtime is perfect for one half of the building. Um, so to have two, I think we can be a lot more efficient and have a lot quicker turnaround after events. Um, so this item costs seven thousand six hundred forty-four dollars and eighty cents, and we do currently have. Um, funds allocated for it within the FFNE budget.
Just checked into the automated ones, you seen them?
I have seen them, we did not look into them, just, I don't know, I prefer to get steps in, I guess.
My personal opinion, I think we need to table it until the project's completely done, and if it's needed. Revisit it at that point. So I make a motion, we table this floor scrubber for the community center expansion. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table the floor scrubber purchases, um, let's have a little discussion on that. You said till after the expansion's open?
So I think after the building's complete. We will kind of know as far as the turnaround times for events, things like that. Um, it is a lot of money, though, seven thousand bucks.
It's not the most expensive one I looked at.
Uh, no, I, I, I agree, but I think. I think we need to just. Wait until we're completely done, the building's open. See how much we actually need a second one. And i- if we absolutely need it, we can purchase it, but I don't want to jump the gun and then have one just collect dust. That, that's my only uh, hold up.
So is the goal with it to have two people or two people cleaning at the same time?
Well, unless we absolutely have to, the issue right now is our current floor scrubber only runs for about two to three hours, and that gets. Pretty much the whole existing side, and then it takes a full eight hours uninterrupted to charge. Can't leave it plugged in overnight, we used to do that and it ruins the battery.
So it just doesn't have the battery capacity to run to do the whole building?
Right.
So if we needed to clean everything.
And it was already dead.
But potentially wouldn't be able to do it then.
Correct, and, right, and I mean, hand mopping is not the best option for a large facility.
Yeah, time consuming.
And physically demanding.
Yep, yep.
So Kyle, are you hoping to gauge how much the expansion's actually getting used? Or if the majority of the traffic's using the expansion, how much the existing one's getting used and. Evaluating if that floor scrubber can just go back and forth between days?
Well, there's, I mean, there, there's times to where the floor's gonna be dirtier, like now that it's a mess outside with the mud. I mean, that, that's a given, but as far as if we can promote. And, and I don't know how it is down there, but if we can mo- promote clean shoes inside. And, and I get that, that is a challenge.
Yep.
But if we can try to promote a few things like that. And especially with the new wood floor that's getting polished and all that, I mean, it's a lot of money. So. Uh, that, that's just my feeling that we should hold off on it, but I'm just wondering, but one day.
What's your cleaning schedule like? Like, let's say.
It really.
Uh, well, like, um. Well, let's say like we open it and a room doesn't really get used much, you're still gonna clean it, you still have a cleaning schedule, everything's gonna get cleaned a couple times a week.
For sure, um, the biggest problem is when companies come in, when they rent the gym. You can stick out all the boot covers and hang signs, nobody's gonna wear them. If you can't police people, especially if you're not there in the early mornings to do that. So every time there's a meeting, I have to come in, sweep floors, scrub the floors, clean the machine, charge the machine, and then. If it doesn't last long enough to clean all of the areas, then we gotta wait and people walk on it and track all that dirty stuff into the clean area. So it's more, it's less efficient, it's really frustrating. Yes, I get that if you don't work there, it's easy to. Not see the value in an item like that, but it's very helpful.
Do we charge a cleaning fee for those companies that use it?
Unless they leave a huge mess, I mean, everyone's gonna leave. A muddy mess, and I have contemplated raising the rates or charging a specific cleaning fee, but I think that's something we need to talk to Liz about. As far as updating the contracts.
Have you looked into any other scrubbers that maybe have better capacity? Maybe we should trade off what we got for something better?
Yes.
But then, you know, I suppose.
Uh, well, and they're usually bigger and they won't fit through our three-foot doorways and the areas where we empty the water. Is only a three-foot doorway, we don't have double doors to those rooms.
This is as big as we could go without it being.
Correct.
A pain that way too.
Yeah.
This might be a dumb question, but do they have any models that have swappable batteries? Cause I'm guessing since you say you plugged in, it's an internal battery.
Yeah, there's two batteries in the scrubber. I don't know that they have interchangeable.
I, I assume probably not.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion questions on that? All right, we still have our motion and second to table the floor scrubber till a later date. So how you worded it?
I can't, I think it was after, I can't remember exactly what I said, but I, I thought it was after the expansion's complete or something like.
Yeah.
We'll keep it simple and just say we got a motion second to table the floor scrubber. All right, let's move to a vote.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yeah, well.
So. I think we're gonna need one. As you said, the one you have right now, there's even times where it doesn't complete the job.
Correct.
And then it's at least an eight-hour period, so, and you can't charge it overnight, that ruins the batteries.
So for context, usually I get done scrubbing the floors and cleaning the machine and have it plugged in by like. Ten or noon, and then if that's eight hours, that's six or eight PM, that doesn't leave a lot of time to clean up, and then people are usually there and you don't want to. Be in the way of people while they're trying to use the gym too.
Hey guys, just for the record, your motion to table the floor scrubber failed.
Mm-hmm, yep.
I should let you also know that prices just went up on them, so there is a potential prices can raise, and I mean, that's with anything, so.
And you said that we have funds?
Yep, we have money left in the FFNE budget, that's where it would come from.
I'll make a motion to approve said floor scrubber.
I'll second that. Okay, we had a motion and a second to approve the floor scrubber quote. Do we want to have some discussion on that?
Well, like the old, the other way to go, I think we're gonna, we, we either need to get that. Second one or trade the existing one off for something that's got more battery capacity. I don't, I don't see how we have any other choice. If. And this is as big as we can go without, because we have to fit the doors, we have to be able to be able to use it. Then, I mean, to me, this makes the most sense, especially if already we can't finish cleaning what we already have.
Okay, Kyle, what you got?
I got nothing.
Yeah, we talked about this once before, you said our existing one has roughly two hundred hours on it.
Yeah, and that was before I knew what the max capacity was on that, so I did call Steins and they said it was between roughly. Five to ten years or fourteen, or fourteen hundred to sixteen hundred hours.
So it's, okay, how long have we had it?
Six years, and we keep it in very good condition, they told us, so hopefully it has a long life.
So it gets used on average thirty-three hours per year? That's, is the new one gonna get used thirty-three hours per year? In my mind, the existing one's brand new, so a couple things, A, it might not get used enough, so using it in both sides would be great. Or B, it would be great trade value for, like you said, if you wanted to upgrade. To something with a longer life battery, and it's only got two hundred hours on it.
Have you did all the looking possible, or could you do some more looking?
I have talked to two different companies, Steins is the one we go through right now, and Dakota Paper is the other one that. Their rates were a little bit higher than what we got, and I know you shared average per year, but realistically. Every year we've gotten busier, and I will tell you this, last year, I've used it four to five times in one week and it's an absolute pain in the butt, but had to be done.
Well, and so, as, I'm, I'm a nerd, um, you said it lasts two hours per charge?
Um, two to three.
So it got used a hundred times. Divided by six years, so really, we're looking at seventeen times.
But the issue is the battery deal, so when we go to the expansion, um. You know, we're only open certain parameters. Is the charging and the cleaning, the floors gonna line up right, I guess is my concern. I mean, it doesn't look like it gets. Used, I mean, is it even a quarter of the existing one's life even used up at this point? It doesn't sound like it. So I don't know, sounds like if, if, if it's that new still. Maybe we should just trade it off for a new one, but I mean, if you did all the looking, you can, you can't find a better one.
If I'm being honest, we love the one we have, and maybe that's just because we're familiar with it, but it does a really good job, um, and it's super easy to use. I feel like having two is gonna help not only the staff with. Being more efficient but quicker turnaround so that we don't have to shut down an area because we're cleaning the floors during business hours, like during peak business hours. Especially, you know, when the school year is going on, after school is the busiest. Can't do anything when there's kids running around the halls, or after community events like farm festival. Absolute mess, the floors because hundreds of people. So to be able to clean that up and have it ready to go the next day for the community, I feel like is a huge thing.
Burton, I got a question for you or David, possibly. This floor scrubber can't be used on the new gym floor, can it?
Well, no. So in the.
It can be used down there, it has different pads. Yeah, that's okay, he didn't, he wasn't looped into the conversations I had.
You wouldn't want to, right?
How else are we gonna clean it?
The way every gym gets cleaned.
I am not mopping a gym floor by hand, that's very physically demanding, respectfully. You can come and do it if you want.
I will.
Okay.
Um, just blocking, right?
Have you mopped?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, so. Couple things now, this is gonna turn into the dishwasher real quick. We have options, she found a good deal, we can get two. We can trust that our existing one's got a lot of life left in it. Um, it is still relatively new, so we could trade it off. Um, also, this is an investment, right? This community center's gonna be standing there for decades. It's not like we have a shortage on closet space in the expansion. How many utility rooms do we have? Lots. If it doesn't get used, it always has a home, and if we ever need one, I'm just pulling out a retirement.
Can I ask a question? Because this has happened before, what are you gonna do, or what are we gonna do if we only have one scrubber? And it has an issue, we're without for any given period of time, that's a lot of building to maintain.
There's another option, all the big spaces are connected by double doors.
Right.
What if you kept that one for the smaller spaces and got a bigger one to use in the bigger spaces? That have better capacity, that you, you can hit the all the corridors. And the great room and all of that with bigger machine and use like for the, for the rooms that have the smaller doors, use the smaller machine. Just an idea.
As opposed if we got a bigger machine, though, it'd end up costing more than the second smaller machine, probably.
Fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Just an idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Haley, what's the lead time on these machines? Are they on the floor ready to?
No, about a month.
And to your point, as far as if a unit breaks down, are there rental op- options?
I'm sure they are, but I'm not sure what the cost would be.
Yeah, we still have that motion in a second. Any other, you didn't get anything? Okay, let's move to a vote.
No.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, that motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, John, you're up.
Evening, guys. Okay, uh, we'll start last fall, since that was the last time I was in here. So I handed all you guys the fuel receipts that we've gotten from, I put it uh, this morning. From September first, two thousand twenty-four till this morning. Um, like I said, it's a little tricky to kind of. Interpret this readout from the Fuel Master because it is an old system. But if you go to page four, uh, we had a hundred transactions for three thousand one hundred and fifty-three gallons, point two eight. Um. That said, we had to, if you look on here. All of September is pretty much gone, other than two early transactions, the first and the ninth. Well, that's because our Fuel Master, we had to get that situated to our bank account, and we had to get a new. System uploaded, and we had all kinds of issues trying to take an old system and try to piece it back together. So, uh, I did not get the QuickBooks report, so I did all that stuff by hand, by manual, so we had a little. Placard out there that said if you need fuel, call this number, and I came and turned it on manually for people. Which we had, uh, just under thirteen thousand dollars worth of sales for September. Um, as you know. During the wintertime, we don't usually get a whole lot of flying out there, but we do get some, so like I say. Thirty-one hundred gallons on there, and then if you go to the back page, um, that'll show you the thirty-two sixty-six point nine three gallons for. The uh, number two, which is a hundred lowlet, number one was the nine eighty-six, that's Jet A fuel. Um, as you also can see, you'll see the Dakota, Curtis, there's all kinds of people that we offer. Fuel cards for, smart cards, they pay a deposit to put it down, they get twenty cents off per gallon. We pass the savings on to the pilot rather than giving it to the credit card companies. That's what we figured that we could do for the flying public, anybody can get one. You want to get a card for your hundred lowlet for your lawnmowers, give me a hauler, bill it out every month. Louis Longy just did that the other day. So, being said, um, we are in. Process of looking for a fuel truck for Jet A, for bigger airplanes like the one that we had land today, which is KSI. They've been here, they were here. Still at three o'clock when I left out there, so it'd be nice to be able to fill them up. But they also have enough fuel to get back to Houston, they don't need to fill up in Tioga. They came from Bakersfield and they got here in three hours, which is unbelievable to me. So, um, anyway, any questions on the fuel thus far? Okay. So, like I say, we are definitely selling fuel at the airport. Um, it's never been down other than. Mechanically, like the first part of September, it's always been active, and any, any credit card can work out there. Saying that, so then we moved on to, um, right at the front of the year, so we re- redid our board. And we took in, uh, we. Our five-year term came up, so with airports, the state designates that we have to have uh, selection services for engineering services. And we went through that, um, we had, we brought down to three entities, KLJ, Mead and Hunt, and uh. Um, oh. My lanta, I forgot the last one. Anyway, uh, we had them in Tioga for interviews at the, at the terminal, and. We picked one, which is Mr. Tom Shower, he's on, and if Tom, you want to say something a little bit about the airport?
Yeah, good afternoon, this is Tom Shower, I'm the senior aviation advisor for uh.
Yeah, good afternoon, this is Tom Shower, I'm the Senior Aviation Advisor for, uh, Meaton Hunt, uh. I personally have been working in aviation in North Dakota for a little over thirty-five years. Um, so excited to, uh, I I worked with Tioga many years ago when I was with KLJ, and prior to KLJ, I was the actually, uh, with the FAA. Where I served, when I, before I left, I served as the ADO manager in charge of North Dakota and South Dakota. So it's exciting to get back to working in Tioga, you guys have exciting things going on in your community, that's one of the reasons we kind of. Targeted Tioga as one of the airports we wanted to add to our portfolio. So having said that, we're we're currently working, I'm a big fan of having a strategic. Uh, plan for the airport that aligns with you, the city commission. And we'll be working with you as we develop some of these to make sure we're aligning the goals of the airport with. You, the board, ultimately wanna make sure the economic development of the community is served well with the airport's, uh. Uh, facilities, so we're working with you on that. Any specific questions for me?
Thanks, Tom, um, yeah, I might have to tag you in here a little bit later with the CIP, um, being said, Meaton Hunt is a. Unbelievable outfit thus far, uh, I can't tell you how much easier that they've just made it just within the last month. Um, we are, we do still have KLJ for one project that we will be do completing in August, we've got a microseal project. Um, just a little over a million dollars, we just approved last Thursday. Uh, that will put the, it's a slurry mix of small aggregate with it. It's supposed to seal up the pavement, so we can get. Um, a little more life left out of our pavement, the last time we had a reconstruction out there was two thousand seven. Uh, we are pitting, the pavement's aging, so the FAA and the state, uh. Come together and they definitely helped us out going into this project, we thought we were gonna be at a four hundred some thousand dollar shortfall. But the FAA and the state come back and they got a little extra allotted money. And we did get quite a bit more, so our revenue or our share for this project is right around eighty-six thousand. So it's, it's a pretty good deal, we will have new paintings out there on the runway, all markers, things of that nature. At the same time, we were supposed to be moving our fuel system where it's at now on the west ramp where the, uh, spray planes are. We were supposed to be moving that down to our west ramp right next to the new terminal out down there. Of course, as you guys know, things are hard to get when they say that it's gonna be here in April, it turns into June. Well, I can't shut the system down in the middle of spray season when we have three aerial applicators. Um. Signed on to work out of the Tyoga Airport. We've got two locals, well. Two locals, one out of Williston, one in Tioga, and then Pioneer Aviation will be spraying out of there, so we will have three egg. Spray planes, or three outfits anyway, working out of there, pulling fuel, and they all agreed to buy fuel from the Tyoga Airport, so that's great for us for extra revenue. Um. When that system will get put in, which will be in August, wh- which the airport will be shut down for, you know, two weeks because we have to be on the runway, we can't. Have airplanes landing when we're trying to put down this microseal. That's when the fuel system will be be moving with an updated Fuel Master system, which it's gonna be all cloud-based, and all this. Rigmarole will go away and we'll actually have decent. Decent reporting and something I don't have to use dial-up internet anymore to use, which is exactly how this works. Um. Tom, is there anything you wanna tell the board about our, uh, CIP that we've somewhat preliminarily talked about in the last couple months?
Yeah, right now, we're working with, uh, Jeff and the board, um, I don't know how often you, or how much you guys follow the, uh. State legislature on funding, this year, the state legislator, uh, issued about ninety-four point two million dollars additional state funding for. Aviation. Couple of things we're looking at is the longevity of the runway, looking at also, uh, possibilities of a parallel taxiway. What happens right now when an aircraft lands and they're coming in into low visibility and you have just a runway and no parallel taxiways? If there's not good communication, it's, there's chances of having, so you there's no removal equipment, maintenance vehicles and or another aircraft on the runway. So we're looking at those possibilities and we'll be doing a, a, uh, small planning study to look at those items. Bring back some recommendations to the airport board. Again, one of the things we're looking at in the capital improvement pattern, how does that work with the industries coming in and out of your community? Trying to make sure that we right-size the runway with the aircraft. Um, right now, we don't think there's a big difference in the runway length that's needed, we would recommend maybe just a hair longer. That does a couple of things, give you better landing distances and snow and ice. Gives you also warm weather requires longer runway lengths takeoffs. It also allows aircraft leaving Tioga, uh, with a little more capability of taking on fuel. As you guys were talking about fuel sales, we always wanna make sure we leave enough room so they can add fuel. And increase your revenues locally, so we're just working out those details, a- as Jeff said, we just were selected about a month, month and a half ago. But we're also looking at, if you guys need those levels of services, we wanna align ourselves with the next biennium. So that this can be considered as possible generational project, as was included for like those projects that got the ninety-four point two million dollars. So right now, nothing's locked in stone, we're just looking at options, making sure that we've. Given you guys the best chance of competing for federal and state funding, making sure that we don't overbuild, but make sure that we allow the aircraft coming in and out. To have a safe operation, and also make sure they leave enough room so they can put fuel on, as most of you know, runway length. You can land an aircraft on a multitude of lengths, a lot of it depends on temperature of the weather, it also relies on. How much load you're taking on, so we wanna make sure that we leave enough so that these guys can take on fuel. So we're just working on a variety of things like that and help Jeff and the board put together a good capital improvement plan that looks out actually three to ten years. So we'll be working with him on that over the next couple of days or next couple of weeks. Uh, if you have any questions or concerns, feel free to let me know or let the board know, and they'll be working with us closely.
You guys got any questions for Tom thus far? So, that said, um, we are aggressively looking to better that airport from. Yesterday, going forward, I mean, um, I would love to get you all for you guys. And Wendy, if you'd like, to come out and I would give you guys a tour of the airport, I don't know how familiar you guys are with it. That's was one of the big things last, uh, Fourth of July. Why I wanted to get the public out there, there is a stigmatism with airports, probably more. Tioga's than anybody's, but. I want the public to be comfortable coming out there, um, we are, we do have an F-TAP program out there that. Like I said before, the airport pays for an instructor with a plane for minor arrow to come to Tioga, you pay for instruction. We pay for it back, the state reimburses us a percentage for that coming back, so we're doing that for the public. Any age, if you're willing to, you know, you wanna learn to fly, discovery flight. You can set it up, so, other than that, um. I guess I don't really have anything else other than questions and somewhat answers, I guess.
Yes, first question I had was is, do we know the dates of when you guys are gonna be doing that work, so we can coordinate that with the ambulance service?
Yes, yes, it'll be all, uh, the first week of August, cause that's when it's gonna start, and there will be a NOTAM in, you know, placed.
And now, ta- go for two weeks then?
No, it'll be for the full month, though, so the entire airport's not gonna be shut down for that entire month, there's a five-phase. System here, so the first phase will be the runway and the taxi lines to the old lines. And then phase two will be the west ramp, which needs it the most of any part of the airport, because that thing hasn't hardly been touched since ninety-one. Then it just continues mov- moving east to the the Nesset ramp that we call it, and then the main ramp. There on the south side of the terminal, and then every other taxiway around there, the fifth one will be the, um. Painting of the markings, so they'll be. It'll be shut down for a couple of days in the late August, but other than that, the airport will be. Open, other than the closures, and it will be, you know, I will make sure that the hospitals around know that too, so.
Yeah, if if you could, cause like I said, there's quite a few flights to come out of there for.
Yes. Yes, there is, we get a lot of live flights coming in and out of there.
Thanks.
Yep. Anything else, guys?
Okay.
Okay, no, I just wanted to come up and, um, like I was talking to Brett earlier, a couple of weeks ago. Um, I'd like to come up, you know, quarterly and just give you guys updates, I'll give you, I'll come up before the August meeting and let you guys know and fill you guys in and. Where we're at and how we're looking, so.
I had a question.
Yep, shoot.
Probably the exact same ones I asked you before, but never got to relay your responses, so. I told you, there's been chatter that the airport doesn't get used like it used to back when TAC was out there.
Yep.
Right or wrong, yes or true, false?
I guess I would. Look at that.
And and that's.
I don't have any of the numbers.
Timber, right?
Well, it's from September till today.
Yeah. So how does this match up in correlation with when TAC was out there?
I don't know, it's a, it's an uncontrolled airport, we don't track flights. I have no idea how many la- landings, how many aircraft come in there. Um, I don't know what the fuel was because that wasn't. We didn't have anything to do with it, I can't even track that.
Kathy did though, TAC did. Um, is it required, a requirement to have an FBO out there?
No.
It's not, okay, that was another thing I was told, was we have to have an FBO.
No.
My understanding was, was the airport authority was gonna assume basically everything that TAC did.
Which we're pretty much doing other than the fuel trucks.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, if you guys, do we have all the services we had back when TAC was there?
So, the full service is, I'm, my number is plastered everywhere in every master service record, if there's any questions on the fuel farm anywhere. Pilots call me all the time, looking to weather, information about fuel, landings, things of that nature.
Yeah.
So, yeah. If they need help, like, uh. I had a, um. I had a small jet that was bringing some duck hunters up last fall. They called and they asked if we had full service, I said, well, if you allow me to fuel you over the wing, cause we do not have single point, I will fill up your airplane, and that's exactly what we did. Oh, so. As long as they call and ask, which is the exact arrangement that they had before, to make appointments for that. I help them out the best I can.
And you're pretty much covering most of that then?
Yes.
Or or other people on the board?
No, is there any? Not really.
Okay.
You know, most of the time, I can slither out there, you know, during the day, a lot of the guys, you know, they've got. You know, Curtis is working at the plant, things of that nature, so it's tough, it's pretty tough for him, you know.
What happens if you can't make it?
I'm always around.
No, but what if you're not?
So like snow removal?
Raiders playing on Sunday in Vegas, and you're down there?
I make sure somebody's around, Dean Hanson worked for TAC for years for for fueling up, and he's on the board too, so. Something happens to old Jeffrey, somebody will pick it up, but yes, I'm most of the time, ninety-nine percent of the time, it's me. I like to know what's going on out there.
Any questions?
I'm good. Yep, thank you, guys, appreciate it, looking forward to the selection.
Oh, the airport. Oh, yeah, we are on to new business, number six, Tioga Airport Authority Board Appointment Letters of Interest, so. Jeff, you know the history, we all know the history. Once upon a time, last, what, last commission meeting, we appointed somebody for this thought. What we did not know was there was an expiration date on the the advertisement, so. We were in the locker room high-fiving each other on a job well done, and the refs came down and said, uh-huh. I'm on that, so we had a special meeting the next day. To rescind that appointment. So as of right now, we're starting from scratch, we are looking to appoint the Tioga Airport Authority Board Member. Um, you guys have had the letters of interest for. Quite a while now, we've got two of them in fact. Do you need me to? Read them to you, or do you feel like you got the gist of it?
Jeff had a question, I think.
He answered it, I just was curious if anybody else had put in.
Yes, um, what, we have two total. So we have Wayne Knutson and Eli McMillan. Let me what, guys? Just so everybody knows, so everybody can. I think everybody should know what these letters of interest look like, so I'll I'll read them off, this is gonna be a little time-consuming. All right, we'll go by. Date of submission, so originally this one was rejected, it's back on the table, it was dated March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Um, addressed to City Commissioner, Commissioners, I would like to be considered for the recently vacated position on the Tioga Airport Authority Board. I have worked with the airport board for decades. I have four hangars with operating aircraft number seventeen, I'm a commercial pilot flying now for nearly fifty years from Tioga. I am also an aircraft mechanic with nearly fifty years' experience operating Knutson Flying Service doing spraying and all aspects of air services. As a fixed base operator, I have worked closely with the airport management team to provide the best services we can for the flying public. As I have previous experience with local, state, and federal agencies, I feel I can help strengthen all relationships that we have and shall acquire. Thank you, Wayne R. Knutson. And then Eli McMillan says, dear City Commissioners, uh, sorry, this one's dated April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, dear City Commissioners, I am writing to express my interest in serving on the Tioga Municipal Airport Board. As an active pilot with several hundred hours of flight experience and a longstanding connection to western North Dakota. I am eager to contribute to the continued growth and success of our local aviation community. Um, under a background and experience header, we've got, I currently base my aircraft at Tioga Municipal Airport. Utilizing its facilities for business travel and personal training. My firsthand experience as a patron has given me insight into the airport's operation and potential areas for involvement. Over the last thirteen years, I have made western North Dakota my home, actively participating in various volunteer roles through church, 4H. Boy Scouts and engagements with the Williston Airport. These experiences have, experiences have deepened my commitment to community service and collaboration. With twenty-five years on oilfield experience, oilfield and agriculture business. I bring a wealth of knowledge in budgeting, planning, community outreach, and marketing. While not formally trained in infrastructure, my keen interest in engineering and observations from airports nationwide have equipped me with a broad perspective on. Successful airport operations. All right, to the municipal airport, I believe in fostering aviation interest among our youth by collaborating with state and federal leaders to enhance training opportunities. And accessibility, exploring funding and revenue generating initiatives that align with both state, with both state and local development goals. Engaging with professional and amateur pilot associations to understand the needs of transient pilots that may help us maximize. Infrastructure for services that bring the most value and revenue for the city. I approached this opportunity to collaborate, relying the expertise of others while also contributing my own insights. My focus is on strategic development, ensuring that the Tioga Municipal Airport continues to serve as a vital asset for our community. Thank you for considering my application, I am available for further discussion at your convenience and look forward to the possibility. Of contributing to the airport's future. So those are two.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Okay. So. I brought. I brought this up to the board on Thursday, and we kinda wanted to talk to you guys about it. I know that you guys don't have much expertise in aviation, you know, neither did I when I first got out there, to be honest with you. So. I brought this up and I just wanted to see what you guys' thoughts were. If, you know, not this appointment, of course, but future appointments, would you guys want a recommendation by our, by our board? And you guys could, I mean, you guys get the letters, you guys do everything, you guys are doing the same, you know. But if we have the letters at the same time as a board voted on a recommendation for you guys, would you guys be? Open to that? You guys can still select whoever you want.
It's like, it's like any other board, you know, the the Tioga Fund, they vet everything, and then they bring it to us, I don't think there's anything wrong with vetting.
That's kinda the, that's kinda the, the line that I was kinda following, was the Tioga Fund type deal.
I think that sounds really good, yeah.
So. Yeah, if you guys are open to it, you know, at the next, if there's an, uh, the next opening, so to speak. If, uh, you guys advertise it. Send me the letters, I'll bring it to the board, you know, it takes, as you guys have seen, it takes a while to get a board appointment for the airport most time, trying to get. Interest out there.
So you didn't, you didn't get both letters of interest for this one?
We don't get any of that, no. I got the one that I requested from Wendy, I didn't ask for Wayne's, cause I thought that he was already appointed. Eli.
Yeah.
But that's what I'm saying, like, we don't have any part of the selection process, that's what I was just suggesting. You know, kinda being like the Tioga Fund vetting part for you guys, you know, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, then, you, we'll try it the next time, and then, you know, if it works, it works, if it don't, then we don't have to, we'll just go back to the old way, but. I thought maybe that would help you guys, you know, for the board's perspective out there, because. for the board's perspective out there, because, you know, you guys have to look at me most of the time, most board don't show up here, so. That's all I have.
All right, guys, you've got a couple candidates. Who's your pick? Who would you like to appoint? We can do it for real this time, I promise.
I'll move to approve, uh. Eli McMillan. To the. Airport Board.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Eli McMillan as a member of the Tioga Airport Authority Board. Any discussion on that? Oh, okay, we'll move to a vote?
Yes. Yes, yes.
Hey, motion carries. Um, okay, moving on. Time clock plus proposal.
Thanks, guys.
Uh, Jayden, do you want to cover this? I can kind of give the the ten thousand foot overview on it.
Yeah.
Let you take it.
Yep, I can cover it. So. What we've been looking into. Is a way to kind of. Modernize. And also probably, um. Make payroll a little easier and trying to figure out a way to make it automated. So we did a lot of looking around. Um. Kind of tricky to find the right system because we have to find a system that backs up with, um. Our systems, that way they communicate, that way it's not. A lot of extra work. So it looks like we've finally found that. So what we have here in front of us. We have a proposal from TCP. It's a time and attendance proposal for us. And it looks like this company. Is kind of been in business a long time, looks like about thirty-five years, and they work with a lot of government entities, so. It should be pretty user friendly to us.
I like I like their their beta testing schedule. I mean, they've got. Initiation phase, discovery phase, planning phase, delivery phase, and a transition phase. So it's not like we're gonna purchase something. They're gonna say this is how it works, and we find out that there are bugs galore. Everybody's been through that, right?
Yep. Yeah, so, um, and then. It looks like the, um. It looks like it would work really good for. Uh, pretty much across the board for the cities, even the police department, which is a huge plus, because, you know, there's a. A bit trickier to navigate being set the schedule so much different than than most of it. But it looks like, um, according to the price, it's actually gonna save us a little money. Um, as far as. For the police department, just a few hundred bucks is all, but, um. Yeah, and it all backs up to our Banyon system, so. It's gonna save time. It's gonna help with accountability. And it's gonna, uh. Just make us more modern. There's no reason to still be doing it the old paper way in this day and age, so it would probably erase some. Not needed paper too, so, yeah.
We were just one step above chisel and stone, right? Unfortunately. Wendy's a superstar, and she makes everything look easy, but we know what it looks like when somebody doesn't make it look easy, and it's very time consuming. We we shouldn't be doing it this way anymore.
Yeah, and this is probably gonna save a a ton of time, which, like. More time is allocated to other things if this is such a smooth process, so.
So it's something that we brought up when, I guess, the night that we appointed Wendy as our auditor, thinking that it was gonna be a huge challenge, and it was something that needed to be done. I mean, if you don't change, you get left in the dust, right? Um, unfortunately, like I said, Wendy's making everything look easy, but we know we need to evolve, right? It's it's gotta be easier for her. It's gotta be easier for her deputy auditors for when she's on vacation. This is kind of the route to go.
Be easier for the employees too, in my mind.
And you'd be surprised, because I've talked to like three or four different outfits too. None of them have even heard of Banyon. So if these guys can integrate their system with Banyon, we've already won. So I I really like it.
And the pricing's fair. So.
Oh, yeah, that ADP proposal, granted, that was like HR stuff, the whole kit and caboodle, but. This is half of what that proposal was.
Yep. Yep, so. It looks like, I mean, obviously, right off the go, there'll be an initial, um. It'll be initially just a setup. It'll be three thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. After that, it'll. What it costs us per year is probably like. Around, I don't like nineteen hundred bucks, maybe, something like that.
We've spent way more in overtime on that in the last, well, few months before recently, so.
Yep. So the initial investment. Right now, i- is probably about five thousand seven hundred and forty-two. So with that, I would like to make a motion to. Approve this time in attendance promote proposal. For the city of Tioga.
I'll second that. All right, we got a motion and a second to approve this. Time off and attendance approval software through TCP. Any discussion on that? Let's move to a vote.
I think it is beneficial to. Step in the right direction as far as modernizing city of Tioga. And I think this is that step, so it's definitely a needed. Nothing. Yeah, and very customizable too, from what I'm told. So like, uh, we'll be able to set like all sorts of different parameters and stuff, but. It'll it's it'll work good for situations like, uh, getting called out as well, because we thought about like just. I mean, we've even thought about just setting up like punch cards at the city shop, but like if somebody needs to go on a call out. They're probably not gonna wanna run to City Hall and clock in. First, so this is just a good way to get around all that as well.
I guess I have one question real quick. So like on the callouts, are they able to clock in on their phone or?
As long as they're within the the geofence.
Yeah, so we'll have to set some parameters, like that, you know, like if. I don't know what we're gonna set for parameters yet, but basically, like, yeah, they if they're within certain parts of city or whatever. Then they'll be able to punch it in.
Okay.
So.
I mean, sounds good to me.
It's got like the geolog in it too, so, I mean, we'll be able to be. Where. You know, if there is a call out or something or whatever, we'll be able to see it. So we'll be able to see. What's going on, kind of, I guess.
Yeah, I get where you're going at. I was I was thinking about it. I don't think I've done a paper timesheet in. Over two decades. Decades. It's about time.
Yep.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, we'll move to a vote.
Yes, yes, yes.
Hey, motion carries. Um, okay, number eight, contract for collection of city sales tags. Um, Jayden, do you know what this is? Essentially, uh. The contract authorizing the Office of State Tax Commissioner to administer the city of Tioga's local sales, use, and grocery seat taxes for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-seven biennium. So we'll just, if you guys. Approve it. I mean, we'll need a motion to approve, um, this contract from the Office of State Tax Commissioner.
Does the name need to be updated on that?
That's a good catch. The name does need to be updated.
So Wendy said she's emailed already, so, I mean. I think I think the message is already sent to him, so.
Are they okay with us just redlining it? Okay.
So with that, I guess I will move to, um, prove this contract for collection from the. State of North Dakota. For. It looks like, um. Twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-seven?
Five to twenty-seven.
I second that.
All right, we got a motion and a second to approve the. Um, collection contract from the state of North Dakota Tax Commissioner. Any discussion? Move to a vote?
Yes.
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 Hey, motion carries. All right, free landfill days. So everybody knows we have a whole bunch of free landfill days, and. It's just been a soupy rainy mess ever since, so nobody's really been able to utilize it, and it's gonna stay muddy, and so we're probably not gonna have it open on the old dates. Um, we got proposed dates, and it's likely still gonna be muddy. So what do you guys want to do as far as? Do you want to extend it out further? Do you want to make more days down the road to make up for it? So the proposed scheduled dates are Thursday, May twenty-second, and Saturday, May twenty-fourth. I think that's three days away and five days away. Still gonna be a soup out there.
I'd say we just push it some more.
Do you want to go? Multiple weeks in June?
Sure. It looks like the first week of June's kind of warming up, so, I mean. I think that'd probably be a. Good shot.
So we could do May thirty-first, um. June fifth, June seventh? Yep.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve the new landfill days, free landfill days for May thirtieth?
Thirty-first.
Thirty. Second?
Thirty-first.
May thirty-first, June fifth, and June seventh.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the free landfill days for May thirty-first, June fifth, June seventh. Any discussion on that? Happy with it, Stephen. Okay, move to a vote?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, and listen carries. Kyle, please tell Kirk that that's what we picked. Gotta have someone out there to open the gate. Zoning and planning apps. Okay, we've got a building permit. Out at Skyview Estates, it looks like we're bringing in a a new single-wide trailer. It's like there's a lot of communication on it. Um, it was approved by. Linda Meyer.
All right, I'm just trying to pull it up here.
Okay, it's got zoning compliance, codes compliance, site inspections, plot drawings, and property boundaries, so it looks like it's checked all of the boxes.
Okay. Uh, I will make a motion to approve building permit. For Skyview Estates LLC.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the building permit for Skyview Estates LLC. Is there any discussion on that one? Okay, we'll move to a vote?
Yes, yes.
Yes, motion carries. And then the next one is. Andrew Nelson, uh, preliminary and final plot. So we got. Recommends a, planning and zoning recommends approval of preliminary plat rearrangement of lots eighteen, nineteen, and twenty in the Oda Guard. Let's see, something addition.
Right, Leegard Ike.
Leegard Ike addition.
I'll make a motion to approve Andrew Nelson's application. Um, the preliminary and final plat application.
I'll second that.
And we have a motion in a second to approve the preliminary and final plat for Andrew Nelson. Any discussion on that one? Okay, we'll move to a vote?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, so this is our addition. This is the water usage slash park district request. I've got it on my phone. I'll pull it out. All right, so this was addressed from Kevin Zarniki. On March twenty-eighth, says, member of the city of Tioga Commission Board, I am writing today as a longtime member of the city of Tioga Park Board. We, as a board, have discussed on numerous occasions, as our park system is now growing with the addition of two new parks. The possibility of having the city continue to monitor our city water usage, but eliminate the charges associated with that usage. Park department at our garage facility does have a well that is on location from previous times that we have invested in equipment to now pump water from that well, and our intention is to use that water for sprinkler systems on the Legion Ball Field, as well as for trees and flower watering. This this is planned as a supplement to city water. The water level does fluctuate, but our intention is to use as much of this wa- well water as possible. While all these changes are not monumental, our park staff works diligently to keep the grass watered in popular areas, place flowers for beautification, and have. And have continued to plant trees to enhance our park system. We feel the consideration of elimination of the charges would allow our funds to continue to be used mindfully for the ongoing enhancement of the park system. Thank you for your consideration on this matter. Luckily, Kevin Zarniki. So we got that a while back. I think all of us, for the most part, probably got a copy of it. My only big ask on it was just to talk to Kevin about it, because it's still a really gray area, how. We used to. Give them water, and then something happened where we don't. And now they're asking for it back. And I I'm just really confused, so I want some background on it, because the reality is, is the levees are through the roof. Like, if we fund this. Does that help the citizens and the levees that come from the park district? I don't know. That's why I need some more background on it, like. Is this gonna help the citizens? Or is this just to help them with an expense that they need the money for somewhere else? I don't know. So as much as I want to help, I much more want to do some homework on it and find out like the root ask of all this. And right now, we'd just be throwing a dart at a wall full of sticky note ideas, and I'm not up for that at all.
It'd be nice to get a little bit of history on that, so that sounds good.
So do you guys want to do anything with it tonight, or do you want to table it till the next meeting, and hopefully we get a hold of him and. Get some history on this?
Are you looking for a formal motion?
I'd say we just table it. We'll we'll revisit once we speak with them.
So we'll we'll try to throw it on the agenda for next meeting, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, what?
Question for you guys on that. Did I understand correctly that they want to use water well to water the fields, which they're currently using city water to do?
Yes, so they use city water, we meter it, they pay for it and use it.
Are you sure that you're not gonna get cross communication when they flood the system with water well, and it doesn't get back into the city lines?
There's a backflow preventer on that water well, I believe, before it goes outside. Kyle, have you looked at it?
Yeah, it's it's actually completely separate, so there's no way it can get in there. It's it's a completely separate system. It's strictly the water well. It goes to a pressure tank through the valving and into the, uh, be the sprinkler heads.
So the only way that it could possibly get commingled is if the line was dry. You started filling that header with well water, and then finished off with city water, and then you'd really know, you wouldn't know how much if it's not metered off the well. You would know how much city water, though, right? No matter what, there'll be a city meter. See, this is another one of them things that we just need more. Work on, like, we need more detail. Thank you. All right.
Yep.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. We got payroll for five twenty-two, twenty-five, and bills for May twenty- Alright, moving on to the consent agenda. We got payroll for five twenty-two, twenty-five and bills for May twenty twenty-five.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda or the payroll and the May bills.
I'll second that. Okay, we got a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on that? Okay, move to a vote?
Yes.
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 Damn, motion carries. Um, just so everybody knows, um, last time. Uh. Community member asked if we could share what we were actually approving, so payroll for this period was. Sixty-five thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty-five cents. So I can't give you a running total cuz there's multiple here. Or can I? Wendy, is that on the last page? The fund summary? Yeah, that's a hundred and fifty-seven thousand two hundred and seventy bucks. Lots of bills, lots of payroll. Mr. Carabao, what do you got anything? You be shy again?
Rain's pushing back a couple days. We're still gonna be here towards the end of that week, the twenty-seventh. Sure, we're supposed to be up on seventy, around that time, so it should be good. Um. More rain being here and saw potential snow this week. They're keeping us posted on if it was more, but that's the stories of the day.
Yeah, you're good.
Yeah, I I'd just like, as a community member, I'd like to make a comment, um. I understand you've got a lot of expenses. I do a lot of traveling because outside sales. Tioga is a very clean community. So, yeah, we, we have a lot of payroll, but leave our staff and doing an excellent job on keeping our city up. You know, other than our, some of our streets where we've done some paving and we have some deficiency there. I know you guys are working on that too, but for the most part, you guys and our employees are doing a great job.
Thank you. You know what to do, Kyle.
On ha- on that note, I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Move to a vote?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, motion carries and we are adjourned at eight thirty-three P M.
Thanks, guys.